Okay, welcome, everyone. Just checking in, looking for the monitor. Yep. I'm ready whenever you are.
You guys are live.
Okay, thank you. All right, welcome, everyone. Today's Tuesday, May 9, 2017. We have a special meeting today, and this is our 2017-18 Budget Study Session. This is first of a couple, so welcome, everyone. We're located here at the Veterans Memorial Hall, starting at 3:30 for our viewers. Thanks, everyone, for coming today. With that, we do have a quorum. All council members are present, thank you. And we'll open it up for a little bit of structure. So we'll open it up for public comment. There's no speaker slips, but that's okay. We'll open it for public comment, and then get into our presentation. I'm going to look for a stop time, so it allows enough comment for council and then public comment at the end. So we'll shoot for about an hour or so on the presentation, getting through where we're at, and then I'll just check in with council and make sure we can get through all of our comments and public comment at that. And then I'll look to the audience, in case anyone's waving to make sure they want public comment. So with that, I'll open it up for public comment at this time, for anybody who'd like to speak public comment prior to the presentation. Seeing none, we'll start our presentation, and then we'll open it up with public comment towards the end. Mr. Buckingham.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council? So the purpose of this first budget study session is for the staff really just to introduce our proposed FY '17-18 budget. I'll just refer to it, we'll refer to it as the FY '18 budget. That's the budget that starts in July of this year, July of '17, and concludes in June of '18. So the purpose of this is for the staff to introduce the proposed budget. We then have several weeks before our next study session to have individual meetings with council members, or two-on-one meetings, to dig into this further. And then the next study session is really designed for more of that discussion and direction. And then we have, so we have a May 23 study session that is going to be essential, and then we have a May 30 study session that is on the 5th Tuesday, so it is not a council meeting night, so we have plenty of time that night, if required, to go further into the budget. And then we will be on track, perhaps, to approve the budget on June 13. Let me just walk you through briefly where we've come so far. So in February of this year, you received, February 28, I think it was, the 10-year budget forecast. And then in March, you provided some specific guidance for the development of this budget that was based in part on some identified concerns in that forecast. In April, the council approved the goals and objectives for this year, which further informed the development of the budget. And then later in April, and early this past week, the staff developed this fiscal year '18 budget based on your guidance given in March and on the objectives completed in April. So we're here at Budget Study Session 1. We've got 2, we've got 3, if needed. Hopefully, we'll be on track for the council to approve the, or adopt the budget on June 13 and June 27, which is the last council meeting before the end of the fiscal year, is really the last opportunity to approve the budget before the new fiscal year starts. The agenda for the presentation, I'll cover some overview items, and then we'll get into the base budget, focusing on the general fund, but also some of the special revenue and enterprise funds. Craig will lead that off, and then when we get to each departmental piece, each department head will present a single slide that sort of summarizes their part, and we'll walk you through the budget worksheets for each of those departments. Maybe not walk you through, provide you an overview of those budget worksheets, because what we're hoping not to do is necessarily to go line by line through paper clips and copy paper and those things. But we do want you to be familiar with the way that the budget worksheets are spread out, or laid out. So again, introduction here tonight is really the introduction. We have council member meetings next week, and then I already described the other study sessions coming up. So allow me to provide you a overview, to sort of put this budget in context. Actually, you are all well aware of this, but to ensure that the community is well-informed. So you'll recognize this chart, which was, a version of it was presented at our last three 10-year budget forecasts. The blue bars show the amount of money in our general fund emergency reserve, sort of in the bank at the end of the year. This chart was, is the one that we showed you in February of 2016, so a year and a couple of months ago. We noted that the general fund emergency reserve, which was well above our required levels, would be, for good reason, because we saw this coming, would be dropping over a few years. We would actually plan to go into deficit spending for a few years, not below the council-mandated reserve level, though, but because of a CalPERS, then that looked like significant, now looks like a minor spike, and because of a projected recession. So this is, at this time, the council adopted this black dotted line as the council-adopted emergency reserve level. And what you'll note is that our reserve was going to drop off a little bit, but was going to track right along the council-adopted emergency reserve level, which is about 20% of revenues, of key revenues, which is well above the GFOA recommended level, but below our goal level of 27.5% for the city. You'll recognize this chart, too, that somewhat minor CalPERS spike that I described is shown here in yellow. So this chart shows our CalPERS contributions over the next, well, through 2025. And what we saw was that the contributions were going to rise slightly, or somewhat, and then begin to taper off, and that corresponds to that drop in the GFOA level and then the GFOA level recovering. However, on December of last year, the CalPERS Board made a decision to reduce the CalPERS discount rate from 7.5% to 7%, and in all likelihood, it will reduce from 7% to 6.5%. What that means is we have a $1.3 million increase in CalPERS required contributions over the next eight years, if the discount rate is cut to 6.5%. We believe it's very likely it will be, and thus, based on your direction, we are planning now as if it will drop to 6.5%. And that is the green and the red and the pink above the water level here, so to speak, which has caused a fairly significant issue for us. Here is that issue in a single chart. So this is our adjusted forecast from February of 2017. What this chart shows is it's based on the direction that you gave the staff in March of this year. You directed the staff to cut $650,000 from the budget over the next three years, $250,000 this year, and 200 in FY '19, and 200 in FY '20. So this chart and the general fund emergency reserve level, this shows what, this includes that $650,000 of cuts over three years. And so what it shows is that at the end of FY '20, in June of FY '20, three years essentially, our emergency reserve level will be right at the council-adopted sort of safe spot. And then, obviously, the reserve level continues to drop after that. What that tells all of us, I believe, is that we have three years to implement the $400,000 of additional cuts that you directed in March, and then to either consider additional cuts to prevent this from happening, or to see if our revenues have improved to the level, that these blue bars are not dropping off because we have increased revenues. So in, I think in both of our estimation, based on the discussion we had in March, we are comfortable with what's happening between now and the end of FY '20. It gives us three years to continue to look at the situation, see it develop, see if there is indeed a recession in fiscal year '19, see if any of our economic development actions cause revenues to improve, and/or to take appropriate action in the out fiscal years. We have updated this slide for what we've called a budget gap. I should stress again, this is not a budget deficit. This is a gap between our current revenues and what we can do with those revenues, and the revenues perhaps we might like to have, so we could do more. And so this is a staff estimation. It is not council policy, but this is the staff laying out for you where we see sort of the gap between what we can afford to do and what perhaps the community might like to do, community and/or council. So there's about $1 million in gap in those CalPERS increases that I just described. That wasn't part of the gap last year, because we didn't have that $1.1, $1.3 million. And the difference in there is what we cut out of this year's budget, by the way. There's another $1.7 million gap to bring our streets up to pavement condition index 70. Our engineering estimation, a very good one that was done in the middle of last year, last summer, identified that we need to spend $2.2 million a year over the next 20 years to bring our streets up to condition. You subtract the 500 or 600 that we're spending on streets now, and that comes to about a $1.7 million gap between what we're doing and what we think we should, what we would like to do to get our streets in shape.
So I just want to interject at any time for council, if there's any questions along the line.
Great, thank you.
I just want to make sure we're pausing when we need to.
And this is the last slide of the intro, and I'll pause right after this one, that'd be great. The capital replacement fund requires likely about $1 million a year in order to replace capital facilities as they age out. Probably about $450,000 in recreation, maintenance, and beautification, not beauty, but beautification. Beauty's good, too. Beautification around the city, that is improved cityscapes, wayfinding signs, sidewalk cleaning, tree trimming, all those things that we would like to do to provide a more beautiful place for our residents and visitors. At least $250,000 a year for new projects, and should the council want to consider it at any time in the future, we're probably about $300,000 a year out of whack with the local labor market on salary equity. So if you add all those things up, that's about $4.8 million. Again, this isn't a council position here. This is just staff laying out, sort of the way it appears to the staff. Again, this is not a deficit. It's a gap between what we have and what we might like to do. Our general fund revenues this year are about $13.6 million. If you consider this gap, and we wanted to fund it all, we would really require revenues of more in the $17, $18 million range. And that's one reason that goal number one in your goals and objectives for this year identifies improving revenues about 25% in the next eight years. So that's a brief overview of where we are. Let me hit two other areas. Oops, excuse me. One is, I didn't realize that this was, I'm going to click all the way through this, so all these guys show here. I didn't realize this was animated. This is the city staff organization, and a few of the changes that are recommended for this year. I'll start over here on the left and move to the right. So in the finance department, we have one employee in finance who is actually billed the water and sewer, that's our utilities billing clerk, Kathy. She is a full-time, partial benefits employee. We used to have a lot of those, and over the last several years, we have been fixing that problem. So she is a 40-hour-a-week employee, but has not had full benefits. And again, the last two years, we moved about five or six other employees that we were working full-time, but we're not providing full benefits to, into an FTE position, frankly, just based on fairness. She's working the same number of hours as Monique, who sits next to her, and it is appropriate to all of our employees that are in, that are full-time, working 40 hours, in enduring positions. And that's the key qualifier that we used last year, that those folks have the same benefits as other employees. That benefit increase is somewhere in the $5,000 range for this year. Second, under the deputy city manager, this budget makes our recreation services coordinator, our recreation services manager, as outlined in the budget letter, that is clearly a management position, manages three full-time employees, a whole bunch of part-time employees, and numerous recreation programs, for a number of reasons. We brought this position into the budget last year, not at a manager level, but at a coordinator level, this moves that position into a management level. Here in community development, our associate planner has been serving us for about five years, has reached all the qualifications to be a senior planner. We have an approved senior planner position in the city, an approved position description for that, but that position did not show on our salary table last year or the year before, when we consolidated them, because we never had somebody in that position, or didn't have anybody in that position recently, so we're adding that position to the salary table in the management column. Support services in the police department, our support services coordinator, this is sort of the same story as rec. Our support services coordinator supervises three employees, a number of programs, from records to evidence, and that position is a management-level position as well. I should pause here and note that when you look at the salary table, not all management positions are necessarily have the same salary range. We don't believe that every manager has the same salary range, but because they have different skills and different requirements, and, but that is, we're recommending that that position be a management-level position also, to recognize the supervisory elements of that position. I'll also note that this is a great example, or maybe even a better example, is over here, the associate to senior planner. Right now, the associate planner, as a non-management position, is paid overtime for the council meetings, where she comes and stays here till 11:30 or so, doing, presenting planning projects to the council. So the effect of moving, for example, that position into management, means that those positions are no longer qualified for overtime, and so the actual fiscal impact is often much less significant than it might look on the salary table, because they're spending time at council and planning commission and other meetings late at night. As management, they will not be getting overtime for that. The fire marshal position that you are going to consider at the council meeting in a few hours is included in this budget. The finance manager position that you're going to consider is not included in the budget, just want to make that distinction. Bottom line is, we are going to be losing our fire marshal, Tom Prowse, on the 1st of July, and he has been in a longtime, part-time position. He's actually probably been working more than part-time hours. And so this budget includes bringing on the new fire marshal as an FTE. So what, the summary of all that is it's an increase of two FTE positions. One is the full-time, partial benefits to full-time, and one is the part-time fire marshal to full-time, for an FTE increase of two, from 96.75 to 98.75. Last slide for me here is a quick overview on salary schedule and negotiations. I mentioned our salary schedule. This is sort of what it looks like, and it's in your packet. The city is currently offering a 2% cost-of-living allowance in this budget, or to our bargaining units, and that is, as you know, under negotiation right now, the salary table, the draft salary table that includes that is included in the budget, and the budget numbers that you are looking at includes that 2%. If the city went greater than 2%, it would take this budget into deficit. And the salary schedule does update four of those positions that I just described on the last slide, the rec services, the rec manager, the support services manager, the senior planner, and the fire marshal. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Craig. I'm sorry, any questions?
Yep, I was just going to look, any questions? Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. Craig Smolinger with the finance department. So this next slide is a brief overview of the staff process with how we develop the FY '18 proposed budget in front of you. So what we did is looked at the current year FY '16-17 budget as a template example to go base our original numbers off of. Obviously, we made some adjustments based on that, either based on trends, or known projects, or known changes in revenues. We also relied on the budget, or the 10-year budget forecast that was presented by Bob Leland from Management Partners on February 28. We combined those numbers with known numbers from the county assessor and tax collector. So some of the big-ticket revenue items, we went and confirmed that, A, those figures were accurate in the 10-year budget forecast, and B, they were accurate for current revenue received in the current fiscal year, and those matched up with the county assessor numbers and tax collector. This budget includes the implementation of council-directed budget guidance, so that included at a March meeting where staff brought to council some ideas for potential cuts. The first round of cuts would be $250,000 this fiscal year, and this budget includes that cut. It also includes, as Dave mentioned, the projected 2% COLA increase. So, excuse me, if council were to approve this budget as presented, it does include that 2% COLA increase in it. It also includes a trimming of services throughout the budget of about $100,000 in routine services. Doesn't mean we cut out complete programs, rather, it cut out specific parts of programs that we currently provide. And at the end of the day, we have a total surplus in the proposed budget of $12,000, so that's budgeted revenues over expenditures. So for the overview, again, this is based on council goals and objectives, and we also implemented the council guidance for going forward with the $250,000 in cuts. It also fully funds all primary community-serving programs and services near FY '17 levels. There's a couple examples, like tree trimming, for example, where that's kind of reduced down a little bit, but doesn't completely remove that. It retains recent increases in weekend and after-hours bathroom cleaning and trash collection, and that was a known objective that was included through the most recent round of goal and objective updates. It also funds $100,000 to implement the Economic Development Strategic Plan and Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. That's not $100,000 each, that's $100,000 total. And also, as previously mentioned, trim some services, such as tree trimming, a public works intern that we have, and the $5,000 out of the Economic Development Opportunity So as I mentioned, the total revenues are in line with the, I'll just call it the Bob Leland forecast, and everyone seems to log on to that. It's Bob Leland, we know what we're talking about. So again, we went back and confirmed those revenue figures with the county assessor and tax collector, to make sure they're in line with actual numbers, not just forecasted theoretical figures, and also looked at the revenues coming in current year to make sure those were trending the right way. It also accounts for a recent master fee schedule update that was brought before council, and council approved about a month and a half ago. The current year trending revenues, as I mentioned, were verified to make sure those actual revenues received are in line with what we're proposing. And as noted in Mr. Leland's forecast, we're not anticipating an economic downturn until fiscal year '19. So we're a couple of years out, so you won't see any reductions in some of those major revenue categories. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Dave.
Okay, so we're going to jump into the department-by-department walkthrough. At this point, it would be good if you would turn in your staff reports to page 45 of 115, and that is the budget worksheets. And so what we're going to do is, each department head, myself, we're going to talk briefly about the overview slide, and then we're going to direct you to the budget worksheet and just briefly talk about that. So the one that you should be turned to right now is one that looks like this, and on the bottom says page 45 of 115, in the late printing with page numbers that we recently got you. So as you're turning to page 45, I'll start with the slide that's on the screen. So the first department is the city council department, that is Department 2110. This department pays the personnel costs for five city council members. It includes insurance share, it includes memberships such as LAFCO, League of California Cities, and the Economic Vitality Corporation. It includes an amount for council member attendance at events, such as the League of California Cities training seminars and annual conference. It also includes $8,000 of what we've called benevolence giving for worthy local causes to nonprofits, such as SCORE, Senior Nutrition, the Community Resource Center, and it provides some funding for a local council education and training event. So now, if we look at page 45, and we're each going to, each department head's going to do this, so I'm just going to give you a brief overview to this worksheet. So if you look at the top of that worksheet, first it says "fund," and then it says "Department 2110 City Council." So we will first orient you to where we are by saying the page number at the bottom, and then the department. And then if you look down the left side, you'll see a series of four-digit numbers, starting in the 4,000s, the 5,000s, 6,000s. We'll refer to those as line numbers, and may refer to a couple of specific lines. And then what we want to look at on all the numbers is the far-right-hand column. The far-right-hand column is the currently budgeted amount for that line in this budget. So if you look at page 45, the city council department, there's no revenue shown, which is normal. The 4,000 lines are the personnel expenses. Nothing of note to talk about in the 5,000 lines. In the 6,000 lines, if you go down to lines 6510 and 6513, for a total of about $11,300, that is funding for the council members to attend specific training and seminars and conferences, as I just described, mostly with the League of California Cities or our Joint Powers Insurance Authority. You'll then drop down to line 6519, association memberships included in there, that $26,000 is our membership in LAFCO, in the League of California Cities, and in the Economic Vitality Corporation. And then if you look at line 8721, payment to other agencies for $8,000, that's the $8,000 that I mentioned for council benevolence. And we've got a slide at the end of the presentation that lays out where that $8,000 went last year, and where you might want to direct it this year. Any glaring questions on the council part?
Questions at this point? I have one quick, I might have asked this last year as well. Craig, the association membership, that was rolled in from the regular budget into city council budget a couple of years ago. It's always been a question, considering LAFCO, association, things like that. Can you maybe expand a little bit on, you know, other experience from other jurisdictions? Is there that kind of similarity, similar type of accounting for, and those types of budgeting under a city council budget?
In my experience, I've seen it done two very different ways. One way is the way we currently do it here, when there's nothing wrong with doing it that way.
Shouldn't surprise me.
Another way to do it would be to have a non-departmental department, essentially. So that's where you would account, I know it sounds weird, but that's where you'd account for a lot of the citywide revenues, the property taxes, the TOT, the sales tax, things like that, and other expenses, such as your LAFCO memberships and things like that. So you could have a non-departmental department that doesn't have any staff or anything else. You could potentially do it in contract services, or do something similar to the 3115 Contract Services Department. So there's a couple ways to do it.
All right, thanks. That's all I, thanks.
Okay, the next section we're going to look at is the city manager section, that's page 46. First, a couple of notes on the slides. So this section covers one person, the city manager, the city manager's share of utilities, insurance, supplies, et cetera. And what you'll see is almost every one of these budgets have a similar description, and that is, for example, the utility bill for City Hall is divided up between the number of employees in City Hall and allocated to each department, based on sort of a pro-rata share. So I'll provide that explanation, so every department head doesn't have to So I'll provide that explanation so every department head doesn't have to do that. But when you see utilities, or supplies, or insurance, that's how that is dealt with across each department. This includes funding for training and for memberships. And then sort of in the discretionary spending area, it includes $20,000 for Economic Development Opportunity Fund. That is associated with goal number one. That was $25,000 last year, and we reduced it by $5,000 this year to reach some of that trimming that Craig described. It includes $5,000 for staff training. That is not for my training, that is for my training of our staff, workforce development training. And then includes $2,000 for one advisory board recognition event. So if you direct your attention to page 46 and 47, this is Department 3110, the city manager's department or office up at the top. No revenues. If you skip down to the 4,000 lines, that is, the 4,000 number lines, that is labor. And really, only one thing of note in the supplies section, which is the 5,000s, line 5352, there's $2,100 there. $2,000 of that is for the advisory board recognition event, and 180 and change is for certificates of appreciation for staff and for community members that we sometimes give. That is for certificates, not for cash. In the 6,000 line, if you look at 6125, that's the 5,000 that I mentioned for staff training. Then if you go to the next page to lines 6510 and 6513, that is for my attendance at training seminars. And then finally, line 6519 is for individual association memberships. I guess probably more important, line 8705 down near the bottom, 8705 and other expenses is that $20,000 for the city manager opportunity fund.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that fairly common to give a city manager discretion of that kind?
I think it is. And what it does is it allows us, at a very limited amount, to be able to respond to pretty low-level emerging needs, or maybe not needs, but economic development opportunities. So for example, about a year ago, year and a half ago, as the chamber was preparing for the business walk, the chamber needed, I think, about $1,000 or wanted about $1,000 to help that business walk, and we were able to allocate that out of here. And this is a great opportunity to say that if there's not funding allocated in the budget for doing something, then I don't allow us to spend that money without coming to the council. So what that prevented is the staff bringing a business item to the council during a regular council meeting and asking for $900 or $1,000 to support a fairly low-level and clearly important economic development opportunity.
But another way to handle it would be to actually just have you come and ask council when these requests come up, whether or not we want to spend that money.
That would be, absolutely would be a way to do it. Also, note that sometimes those requests have a pretty short fuse, and as we try to get things in front of the council and council meetings, this is a way to help with that.
Thanks.
Anybody else? So real quickly, so as far as, we're just going through the presentation, some questions. We can come back to these and add comments as far as things we might be better towards the end.
Absolutely. I think the best way, especially considering that you wanted to leave about an hour at the end, is to focus, you know, make sure that there's understanding of what's in here, and then we have opportunity at the end of today, and especially in the two weeks ahead and at the next study session, for the council really to have discussion and direction.
Okay.
Craig?
All right. So as Dave mentioned, we're going to be kind of guiding you to what page or on the footer of your packet there. So if you look to page 48 of your packet, has the Department 3115, as I mentioned, as contract services. So that was created last year to try and consolidate all of these kind of big-ticket across-the-board items into one more transparent area versus having them piecemealed in different departments. So last year, there was roughly $767,000 budgeted in contract services. This year is only a $1,000 increase, and what that tells me is we did a heck of a job allocating resources to this appropriately last year. So looking at the trending figures for each of the line items that you'll see on here, and I'll go over in a second. We did a really good job last year. I took a look about three days ago, and those trends are running perfectly with what we're proposing on here. So what's included in the $768,000 are PARS fees. So PARS is our Public Agency Retirement System for our part-time employees. PARS for part-timers, so there's some management costs associated with that. $150,000 is the general fund portion of legal services. Again, that's trending nicely to about 150 at the end of the year. $60,000 for our yearly general fund portion of AGP costs, so we can televise and use this facility and get the audio up and all those fun things. $376,000 is the combined dispatch costs for both our police and fire services. So exact same amounts as last year. Those are going well. There's no increase in the contracts this year. $9.5,000 for docky team, and docky team is storage of a lot of our files and things like that, so we don't have to have those all on-site, but we can still go pull them if need be. $10,000, which is a portion of the GIS services. $35,000 for RICO for a copying machine, so there's just copying machines throughout city facilities. And again, that's the general fund portion of those copier costs. $50,000, which is our contribution to the visitor center, which pays the rent in there or for them, excuse me. And then $70,000 for animal services. So a note on animal services, this current fiscal year, '16, '17, we had $70,000 budgeted, but we're only going to spend about $45,000. So in moving forward with the new facility, this $70,000, even though it's in line with current year, it should cover us no problem.
If I can just clarify, the $50,000 for visitor center is not for rent. That is for the services provided by the visitor center, primarily for the labor of the people in that. The rent is provided free in that city building.
Excuse me for the air. I'm going to go to the next one.
Okay, I'll be reviewing the city clerk, human resources, and elections departments. As an overview for elections, the city currently makes a $10,000 set aside for elections, which are generally held in even-numbered years. So the $10,000 that you'll see in the Department 3120 budget on page 49 is a set aside. It will be carried over to 2018 for an election held in that November. For the city clerk budget, you'll see the normal share of utilities, insurance, supplies, as Dave noted, and also contractual services for the municipal code updates.
Pages, could you maybe just let us know?
I'll go quickly over that and then go line by line. Yeah. So you'll see municipal code updates, required legal noticing, and then in HR, we have legal fees for labor negotiations, Liebert-Cassidy-Witmore contract, ongoing training, and money for recruitments, and new employee drug testing and fingerprinting. So line by line. On page 49, you'll see the elections department, 3120. And as I said, on line 6199, you see the $10,000 set aside. Moving ahead a page, excuse me, moving ahead two pages, to page 51, you'll see the city clerk department, 3130. The 4,000 lines cover roughly 80% of two full-time equivalent positions, the city clerk and deputy clerk. The balance of those labor costs are charged to risk management. And nothing of note in the supplies section, so moving down to services in 6106, contractual services include the municipal code updates, which is done on an annual basis. Professional development includes $5,000 for training seminars for the clerk and deputy clerk. And then skipping down to 6710, 2910 is set aside for required legal noticing of ordinances and public hearings. Moving on to the next page, Department 3140, human resources. That's on page 52. We have one full-time equivalent employee in that department. Moving down to services, on 6105, we have money, excuse me, 6106, we have funding set aside for labor negotiations. The city is currently in labor negotiations. Should we, that result in a multi-year contract, that number could be reduced. It also includes Liebert-Cassidy-Witmore membership. Line 6150 is for fingerprinting for new employees and volunteers. Line 6720 is 2,500 that covers pre-employment drug testing for safety and DOT employees, as well as the required random drug testing for our DOT employees. And lastly, on line 6760, there's 20,000 set aside for recruitment. That's an estimate based on previous years. Last year was a little bit higher, but we don't anticipate that happening again this year.
Anybody?
On page 51, 6106, under services, services, we're going from 3,000 this year to 7,900 for municipal code update. Why the mark to change?
We, you'll notice there is now nothing budgeted in line 6105, so it's really a reduction of those two amounts, which did previously total about 11,9, down to a total of 7,910. In terms of actual costs, I'm sorry. The budgeted amounts were 5,500.
You combine 6105 and 6106, which I have 3,000 and 2,550?
And our municipal code update alone comes to about 5,000, and then there's money for something else in there. I forgot which. I will look into that.
Okay.
If I could jump in real quick, council member heading. If you look one column to the left of that budgeted amount, you'll see the 2017 actual column, which is in the middle.
Right.
You'll see we spent a decent amount, over 2,000, for that line item for muni-code updates. See, we're
I do see that, yeah.
4,360. So this budget is more in line with the actual cost of providing the service.
So we just didn't budget well last year?
Or potential changes.
Or there were more code changes.
How often you would update that certain
Okay, thank you.
And just as a comment there, last year was the first year that we pulled the city clerk budget out of the city manager's office budget, so there were some estimates made there that maybe didn't turn out to be quite right.
Got it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Dana, just one quick question. I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. As far as the elections go, and if I'm reading this correctly, I guess it's on the 3990 line or down towards the 8705. Were we budgeting, at one point, we were budgeting every other year for that? Instead, we divided up into budget every year for the elections? And that's what that 8705 line is for?
That's the carryover from the previous fiscal year, I believe.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, thanks.
Okay, Connie?
All right. Greetings, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'll be reviewing the PowerPoint slide for deputy city manager, and then we'll jump into the budget worksheets. 85% of the budget is personnel, so there's one FTE. That would be me. Included is share of utilities, insurance, and supplies, includes training and memberships. And besides FTE and labor, the next big line item is 5K for continued public communication through utility flyers. So we'll jump into the worksheet right now, page 50 of 115. And as you see, the 4,000 series is, that's all labor. And then if we jump down to supplies, line 6107, that is where the flyer is located, 5.4K. And then besides that, the next big one is the share of utilities, which is a shared cost that we help pay for the visitor center building, the utilities. That happens up at the tourism and visitor center. Do you have any questions?
Anybody?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Craig?
All right, let's jump over to finance. So if you turn to page 54, and Okay, so before we hit those line items on page 54, just want to get us a line on the right page. What's included in here are our personnel costs, which includes staff time for me, for Sandy right next to me, our budget and accounting manager, a senior account tech, and one account clerk. So I mentioned one account clerk because that's the general fund-funded account clerk that does a lot of our accounts payable and business license and TOT. We also have two account clerks that are up at the front that do utility billing. So when Dave had mentioned one position that we have proposed in this budget, going from a part-time, still-working 40-hours position to proposed at full-time, that would be one of the 50% split water and sewer enterprise fund-funded positions. Does that make sense? Okay. Okay, so if you look at line 6103 on page 54, and that's very unique to the finance department for financial audits, so that is just under 41,000 for our annual audit from the PUN Group. And then also some GASB 68 reports that we're required to prepare. So GASB 68 has to do with how we account for our longtime pension debt to CalPERS. What's also included on line 6741 are miscellaneous bank charge, and those are bank analysis fees that we have to pay to the bank because of how many transactions we do. And rather than piecemealing that out to each individual department that either takes in revenue or makes payments, we just lumped it all up in here because it makes a lot more sense to do that. Outside of that, in a couple of different areas, we have some staff development costs. So under 6125 professional development, we have retained the 2,000 going forward. Reason for that is three out of our four full-time equivalent employees we have in finance are still new since October, so we want to make sure we're investing in keeping those staff, including myself, up to speed. Also along with that is some little cost for meals and lodging that are associated with that development. Under line 6513, meals and lodging for 800. And then directly below that, 6519 are some associated memberships for the Government Finance Officers Association, California Statewide Municipal Finance Officers, and the International City and County Managers Association, or Management Association, excuse me.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I'm curious to know how you spend $13,000 on postage? And given especially that you didn't, you spent less than half that last fiscal year. What do you, I'm just curious, what does the finance department, that's not water bills or, because that would be under the sewer fund, right? Water and sewer.
So a lot of that has to do with our accounts payable billing, our business license, our TOT sendouts, all that stuff, and they are a lot of them. So if you look to the 2016 actual, so your second column with numbers, we're right in line with our 2016 actual of 12,874 bucks.
So last year, you just managed to?
Well, the 2017 actual was to date when we printed this.
I see.
And we anticipate some more printing going on through the end of the fiscal year.
All right.
So it's only about halfway, but we anticipate a little bit more.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, cool. All right, thanks.
Okay, Jody?
John, I have one question. Yeah. This is either for Mr. Buckingham or for Mr. Smolinger. So we've been talking about, and I hesitate to bring this up because it potentially means more money, but we've been talking about the issue of the finance department being understaffed, and that's been in a number of reports that you have written and that we've heard from the auditor. Yet I see no adjustment for that. What's our plan to meet the needs next year without, I mean, it's wonderful that you're going to do it, but what are you doing?
So we're not going to do it yet, so we don't want to get ahead of ourselves here. In the city organization, I noted that we included the fire marshal, as an FTE, in the city organization. At the same time, I noted that we did not include the, an increase in person in finance. You're going to hear both of those items at the council meeting. You're going to hear both of those items at the council meeting. In staff's estimation, we, you'll hear this later, we cannot take the risk in fire marshal of not having a fire marshal, and therefore, we ensured that we budgeted for that. In the area of finance manager, it's really a risk management question. It's a, it's how much risk are we willing to take in some of these financial areas? And we want to leave that for the city council to decide, not for the staff to decide. So we included the fire marshal in this budget. We did not include that position in this budget. And were the council to direct the staff to go hire a finance manager to assist with this, then we would have to make some budget adjustments and come back to you in two weeks and include those.
Just wondered if you forgot to put it in, that's all. Good. Okay, thanks. Should have asked that, huh?
Okay, we'll be, next slide, we'll be covering the police department. And as indicated on the slide, there are no changes to personnel. We'll be at full staffing. For reference, it'll be page 55 in the study worksheet for the budget when we get to that point. This also includes all of our basics, utilities, insurance, mandated training, special event details, all of those things that the PD participates in. It does not include $105,000 of Measure Q funding. But to note, it will include significant overtime savings due to being fully staffed. It also will reflect that the school district has reduced their contributions for the SRO position, which is being absorbed and will transition into this budget. And part of the COPS grant, which is used to purchase the two electric motorcycles that you see up there on the screen. So moving to the worksheet on page 50.
Jody?
Yes?
Please hop in and clarify some language on the SRO. We are not absorbing the SRO position permanently into this budget. The school district, not, not the city, decided to cut the SRO program, and therefore, the school district is not contributing the $70,000 a year toward the SRO. So the way it used to work is the, the school district kicked in about 70 grand, the city kicked in about 70 grand, and we had an SRO. The school district has decided not to continue that program anywhere in the school district because of their substantial budget cuts they are facing in the eight years ahead with the Diablo closure. And so our recommendation for the transition is that, is that we have money in this budget to continue to employ the police officer who is in that SRO position for up to one year. What we anticipate could happen this year, and the reason we recommend doing it this way, is that we will, we may have a police officer who retires or resigns this year, and that would allow for a smooth transition. Alternatively, if we just cut all of the funding that was committed to the SRO position, then we would have to go lay off a police officer on the 1st of July. So what we recommend is we've got, we've got half of the, the SRO fund, half of the funding required to continue to employ an officer who is allocated to that SRO position in the base budget, and another half of that funding in the Measure Q budget. And we'll talk about that when we get to Measure Q. But if we have a police officer retire in December, then we won't need to commit that second half, the Measure Q half, and that will go into streets. If somebody retires in October, then we'll have even more. But if nobody retires until next June, then we've got funding available so that we don't go and lay off an officer sort of precipitously at the beginning of this fiscal year.
Does that mean that whenever you do have a retirement, that you will be pulling the SRO out of the school, onto the regular force, and we will no longer have an SRO?
Yes. And, and it means that what we would intend to do is to slowly transition and wean sort of the school and us off of having an SRO sitting there all year. So maybe he or she will be there in August and September, and be there a little less in October and November, so that we have a transition plan. And I know Jody and I'm sure the new chief also intend, just like we have an officer who is the liaison to the Eback, he intends to have an officer who is the liaison to the high school, although they won't be able to be sitting in the high school SRO office all the time.
So if, I just want to repeat it back, so I understand it correctly. So the, the schools have cut it off effective July 1. No more reimbursement for that position. We're carrying it in anticipation of succession planning and transitioning that officer into someone that may retire, or has announced a retirement?
We don't have any announced retirements. It's been many years since we went a whole year without a police officer transitioning.
Okay.
And I don't want to get into projecting what may happen, but we don't have any announced retirements. But it, it would be unlikely if we didn't have a transition in our 17 sworn officers in the year ahead.
Okay, and so that means that we're going to, we are, the city is going to fund that position, transitioning down beginning July 1, with no contribution from the schools, the way I understand it right now. And then at some time in the future, that individual reverts over to us full-time, or back to us full-time?
Correct.
And is there a date certain on that?
Can't predict when a police officer might resign or retire. And I would, I would phrase it a little bit different. Frankly, the emphasis here is, is not so much on transitioning the SRO as it is to, we already had six months' worth of that position in our base budget. And instead of going and finding our newest hire and saying, based on this school board decision, you're now out of a job, we see an opportunity here to do two things. One, to have a managed transition, and two, to have a transition in the SRO, so it's a little less precipitous at the high school also, that there is still some, some SRO-like capacity at the high school for the first few months of the year.
Could I just, a point of clarification on this issue. It was my understanding that the second half of the SRO was paid out of Measure Q monies, not the general fund.
That's correct.
So, just to clarify that.
So we
So now you're adding the second half from the general fund, and assuming that the other half will come from Measure Q.
Right. Yes. Although the way that we would intend to execute this is to pay the first six months out of the general fund. And so if we have a trans, the first six months of the year out of the general fund, so if we have a transition in December, then the $77,000 in Measure Q that was allocated toward the SRO would go straight to streets.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Jody.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Dave. Referencing back to page 55, starting at the top, Department 4110 for the police department. In the 3,000 section covering our revenue, revenues includes items such as an increase in the post-training reimbursements, police vehicle impound fees, fingerprinting and cost recovery fees. Moving to our expense line items in section 4,000, on line 4120, it will reflect a reduction in our projected overtime budget of approximately $60,000. Again, this due to being fully staffed at this time. And this savings, again, will help offset the loss of funding from the school district that we just discussed. If you'll turn the page to page 56, moving down to the 5,000 section, this covers the police department's operational costs, including items like as line 5110, our fuel costs, line 5150, which is range and ammunition costs, and lines 5301 and 5503, which are general office and computer supplies. Moving down again to section 6,000, this includes our general services, such as line 61 and 6401, which are legal services and liability insurance requirements. Line 6125 covers our legislative and post-mandated training requirements. Lines 6150 and 6151 cover items such as fingerprinting and investigations, supplies and equipment. I would also note that line 6153 reflects a reduction of $7,000 in pre-employment testing, which is due to our being able to retain everybody that we currently have, not having to do the testing. Line 6604 covers our vehicle maintenance and repairs. And line 6640 covers maintenance contracts, such as our EIS or the executive information services and our report management system. If you move to the next page, 57, at the top, 8721, that reflects maintaining the CAD-to-CAD system between the police department and the sheriff's department dispatch. Dropping down into Department 4150, which is police support services, the 4,000 section again reflects the personnel and labor costs associated to that department. And moving down to line 6640, this reflects the remaining portion of the maintenance contract for EIS and RMS systems. And the last section at the bottom, Department number 4190, is listed as the state police grant, the COPS program, which covers the personnel and labor costs for our part-time property and evidence technician.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. And I'll go ahead and start off on the slide, but then we're going to be jumping to page 59 of the worksheet. So starting off with the slide, we do have one additional FTE fire marshal, which we're going to talk addition, a correction, a recommendation of the addition of the fire marshal, which we'll be talking about in a few hours. And, but it's going to be offset by elimination of some part-timers and also new fees that was approved last month. We do have some increased apparatus maintenance due to new emission controls on three of our new apparatus. In the last three years, we've been spending about $7,000 on average on maintaining the mission control. So we do have cleaner engines for the environment, but it is costing us $7,000 a year. And truck 5341, being a newer ladder, requires specialized testing and maintenance yearly. Our corporate yard has been great over the years, but to increase the additional training and equipment needed to it, it's much more cost-efficient to get it repaired and maintained locally in Paso Robles. This does not include Measure Q spending of roughly $357,000, which of 260,000 of it is for maintaining our four-person staffing. This doesn't also include the mutual aid reimbursement, such, which are going to be adjusted at mid-year budget. Unknown how much funds we're going to be getting through mutual aid. And we also manage the EOC budget, but it's also grant contingent with a grant of $6,500. So going to page 59, going right on top, Department 4220, fire department. Right on top, you'll see our request into PG&E to help enhance our EOC. Our EOC budget is contingent on this grant. If we do not receive these funds, we will not be spending the money in our EOC. If you go on down to the two account numbers, 3426 and 3427, these are the fire marshal fees that we charge, pass-through fees for engineering and checks and building checks and site checks. You'll see an increase in those two funds to support that. If you look at, go down a couple more at 34272, you'll see that our other fire services are at zero. This is where we receive our mutual aid funds through the office emergency services at mid-year. And that's what we balance off for our increase on overtime and also any additional fired, wildland fire services that we provide. And if you go one more line down at 3473 EMS services and transport, this is our ambulance operation performance franchise tax from San Luis Ambulance. Basically, we get paid by San Luis Ambulance through a franchise tax to provide ALS service to our community. And it had a program 2% increase of 90, to $90,000, and that pays for our ALS service roughly 100% what we provide today. So if we go down to payroll, if you look at 4120 for overtime pay, you'll see that is considerably lower than last year. Again, this is what we adjust at mid-year when we see how much funds we get from office emergency services. And everything else is balancing now. If we want to go down to services, and we want to go all the way towards the bottom of services, and then on line number 5503, and this is where we have the account for $10,056. This is where we increased our services for the maintenance of our ladder truck, and we actually have seven vehicles that we have scheduled tire replacement. And fire truck tires are pretty expensive. If we go down to services, and if we look at line number 6125, you can see that we're still holding the line on professional development from our firefighters. There is a lot of OSHA and fire, state fire marshal require courses that are required throughout the year. This year, we were able to get some grants, so you can see where our budget line is a lot less. We received two different grants, one for hazmat and then also for emergency management training, where we sent three personnel back to Emmitsburg. So, but this year, we're going to continue to apply for grants, and hopefully, we can reduce that line at mid-year. Going down services to page 61, to line number 6604, this is outside vehicle repair. This is where we have the increased adjustment for the mission repairs that we have to do on our three apparatus annually. So if we go down the page to Department 4210, and that is for EOC disaster preparedness, on the supply side on top, that is all contingent to the grant that we're applying for through PG&E. Yes, sir.
What page are you on, I'm sorry?
Oh, that'd be page 61.
Thank you.
So just for, to repeat that, so all the supplies in our EOC is contingent to the PG&E grant. And then the service lines right below that, 6125, that is that we like to send additional city personnel to EOC management training. We will be applying for grants for additional personnel. We have CSTI, California Specialized Training Institute, just down the block by Questa College. It's a great location for that training. And it also has our sheriff utilities of the EOC in the community services building. Questions?
Matt?
Chief, I do have a question. If you can go back to page 59, item 3426, and looking at the 218, 2018 number is 103,000. And is, is there a reason that that is three times as much as the previous years?
That's affirmative. We're going to be talking about it in a couple hours when we're talking about our fire marshal position.
Okay.
And that's, that's what it's all about.
Totally.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, Rob.
Thank you. Rob, I'm just, pardon me. I know I'm trying to allocate and just checking with council, so coming up at 5:45, just want to make sure, allocating in about 10 minutes, that's a little bit less than 10 minutes each for council to be able to respond, and a few minutes for public comment. So at about 5:45, I know that's condensing things down, I'm going to look to council to, to look at having their discussion further on this, and then open it for public comment. I know it seems like it's going to cut the presentation short, but I just want to check in with council and, and make sure we're copacetic on that. So just giving a heads up. Thanks.
Sure. I'll refrain from going line by line through the, not, seven departments that make up Public Works, which are engineering, consolidated maintenance, vehicle maintenance, street maintenance, trees, street tree maintenance, street lights, and storm drain. No personnel changes anticipated for this year. Consolidated maintenance is fully integrated into and consolidated, so they're all working together on the variety of projects. I already went over which departments. It does not include this year's request for $430,000, $530,000 in Measure Q for streets. Items that are included are about six tons of asphalt per week for nine months of the year, our required street sweeping contract, $25,000 for tree trimming, which is a 45% decrease, $50,000 in engineering consulting services, which is a 25% increase, and elimination of our paid intern position. So now I'll go through the budget sheets, starting on page
Actually, Rob, let's just stay at the slide level for now, and so we can get through everybody. And if we have time to go back into the budget sheets, we'll do that. Is that right? Okay. So next up is, Connie?
All right, greetings, Mayor, Councilmembers. There are no, for recreation, the biggest change is the pool is coming online at the end of fall 2017, so there will be some, some additions there in the budget. Basically, how this looks without jumping into the budget worksheet Basically, how this looks without jumping into the budget worksheet is, it's about 40K for rental space from the high school, and about 36K for staff, which includes part-time, lifeguards, swim coordinator. So that's, that's one, I'm just going to stick to the slides, and if, I'm sure you may have questions later, but this is the, the big change, the big addition to recreation. Also, the recs, spending more nominal is the 5K for two recreation guides, and includes 5K for special events such as the Fourth of July and Downtown Halloween. Thank you.
Just, just one quick question. So this does not include, you mentioned that you wanted to upgrade the one position from supervisor to manager.
No, it does not.
That's correct. There's no FTE change.
But there is a...
But that qualitative change is included. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Scott?
Thank you, Dave. So, Community Development Department budget, this is for planning, building, and code enforcement. We have no increase in staffing levels. We are changing the, moving, suggesting changing the associate planner, moving it up to the senior plan, planning level. That is the third position in the, in the planning series, starting with assistant, then associate, then senior. We have $40,000 included for outside commercial plan check services. That's an increase of $30,000, and that's to account for some commercial projects that are going to be coming through the pipeline, and we send those out. All of that additional cost will be borne by the applicants when they come in, so no additional fees from the city for that. You see in the discretionary spending section, $100,000 for implementation of plans, that's related to Goal Four, and would specifically be used for the downtown waterfront strategic plan implementation and economic development strategic plan information, implementation. There's also $20,000 in the budget for consultant services and peer review services. Those would typically be associated with environmental review. Again, would be costs borne by the applicant, but having that little bit of the money in my budget for that allows us to move more quickly as opposed to having to come back and get contracts approved from Council every single time. With that, I'll wrap up. There are questions?
Questions, sir, left to my right. Okay. Measure Q?
All right, I'll buzz through Measure Q pretty quickly here. We're projecting revenues going up a little bit to 1.024 million. And the way that is being proposed to allocate, as Rob mentioned, is 530,000 to streets, which is a little reduction from the 587 the current fiscal year, 357,000 to fire, and that includes payment for the vacation relief or twelfth fire, or eleventh firefighter, excuse me, as well as some overtime expenses in there as well. There's also 105,000 to police, and that includes 77,000 for half of that SRO position that we were, we were talked about, as well as a little bit of standby pay. There's also 32,000 in consolidated public safety, and that includes 15,000 for an emergency plan update. So we're on an old emergency plan, and this would bring us up to the standard across the state. And then 17,500 for the Black Hill repeater repair and study project, which I'm not sure if you heard this, but during the recent windstorms, that was damaged, the repeater was. So a couple notes, in that 357,000 that makes up fire is roughly 92,000 in fire station debt, so that's paying off our USDA certificate of participation, so that's going to go on for quite a few years here. And then also, as noted, the 77,000 for half of the SRO transition.
And as far as damage from storm, is there any insurance coverage for that sort of thing? I know we've got the fence there at Monty Young Park that has repair. Are there insurance things for the damages? Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, there's no insurance on it, but we are applying for FEMA funding from disaster grants, and we're working on that right now. We will not pay for, it'll pay for the antenna repair, but in the eternal repair, it may be on us.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, next is a T-Bid, I'll just cover this one to keep us rolling here. So this is the, the Morabey Tourism Business Impuriment District budget. This is the three percent assessment on hotels and motels. This budget is based on the, based on the T-Bid recommended budget, not approved, actually. T-Bid recommended budget that you saw initially two weeks ago with the T-Bid annual report. There are three employees in tourism, one FTE, and two part-time, no changes there. Most of the expenses in here are marketing and public relations contracts. Those contracts were presented to Council and approved by Council. This includes $60,000 to support events, essentially event grants for events such as Harborfest, Avocado Margarita, Car Festival, Kite Festival. Includes $30,000 for shoulder season, off-season occupancy opportunities related specifically to Goal One, that's one of the objectives in there. $9,000 for visitor guide printing, and 4,500 to print the activity passports, three, three rounds of those. Questions? Okay. Okay, water and sewer, Rob?
Thank you, Dave. Water and sewer rates passed in 2005 have righted these previously underwater funds. Funds are producing sufficient revenues over expenses to fund continued operations at our existing wastewater treatment plant and our state water payments with the debt coverage ratio, along with capital projects and our continued planning efforts. Council, as you know, Council and community are actively discussing next steps on our rather large project that will have an effect on the budget moving forward and will need to be amended. The water fund, not a new change, but we now have a utilities manager who, Joe Miller is sitting in the audience there, which was a combination, taking our wastewater division manager, reallocating that position to oversee both the water and the wastewater departments, now divisions. Revenues and expenses were based on our existing rate model prepared by Bartle Wells. Discretionary spending includes our utility discount program. You will see in the next version of this budget, there are some rather line, large line items in the operating budget. Traditionally, we have budgeted these medium-sized capital projects in our operating budget. We're pulling those out into the capital budget and with the associated funding. And expenditures in the water fund are per our legal requirements. They cover our costs and debt service and our savings for our capital projects. And the next is the sewer fund. Again, staffing change, Joe. We have consolidated our wastewater treatment plants and collections crew into one team, and are working towards them being able to effectively work either in the collection system or at the wastewater treatment plant on New Worf. The revenue expenses were based on the 2015 Bartle Wells rate model, and we have moved, based on audit findings, the Worf project into the 321 fund from the 599 fund, which is our shared fund with Cayucus, to make sure that there's clarity and transparency in those expenses. Again, we are going to make that same change that we propose in the water fund to our wastewater budget, moving those major maintenance capital projects into the Capital Projects Fund versus having there be 200 and something thousand dollars as miscellaneous expenses that doesn't really tell us a whole lot. We have maintained expenses at historic levels, and again, because this is an enterprise fund, our expenses and revenues basically match with the savings for capital projects. And that concludes water and wastewater.
I'm just going to check in on this. So how many people for public comment would like to speak to that? So we have two. So looking at public comment, and putting this right about 30 minutes or so for discussion for Council, we can push this a little bit further, but I just want to make sure that Council is comfortable with continuing with the presentation and reducing the amount of discussion time we have, or if we want to conclude this now and get into any kind of discussion that we want. Is there any?
We have another session as well.
We do.
So we'll be able to formulate further questions and do it then, so I'm comfortable.
Keep him going? Okay, good. Just want to check in on that. All right, good, let's keep going. Thanks. Eric?
Actually, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Do you have one question? Thanks.
Rob, if you could go back to slide thirty-three on page seventeen, your first comment was water and sewer rates passed in 2015 have righted these previously underwater funds. I knew there for a few years, we were getting general fund monies to help with water, or wastewater. So did we have, did the city have to pay back those enterprise that were the monies we used from the general funds?
We weren't transferring general fund monies into our enterprise funds. What was happening with the water fund is we were using our accumulation fund to pay operating expenses, so, and we weren't making our debt coverage ratio. So we were pulling money out of our savings account, basically, to pay our day-to-day expenses. But there were no transfers from the general fund into neither the water nor wastewater fund.
So knowing then that we were using those emergency, those savings funds, did we repay those? And have we put that money back into the savings account?
Well, we're building those funds back up through increased...
So then that's appropriate when you have to, you take from a savings fund for capital, for your wastewater treatment plant, that you can do that, and you don't necessarily have to put that money back in?
Correct.
Okay.
Probably not best to call it a savings fund. We robbed long-term maintenance to pay for short-term operations. So over 20 years, we slowed down the maintenance we should have done on pipes under the ground in order to pay for operations. And your, your action to correct the water rates allowed us to now not take money from long-term maintenance of the, of the system. But we do not have, because there was 20 years of no increase in water rates, we don't have the funds to go back and do all that maintenance that we deferred for 20 years.
Our accumulation funds for both our water and wastewater are in the positive value. So as of today, we have about 2.8 million in the water accumulation fund and 4.2 million in the wastewater accumulation funds.
Okay, no, thank you. That, that clarity, when people think of the rate, various rate increases, that's a good way to trend a day like that. Thank you.
Okay, Eric?
Good afternoon, Mayor Anderson, Council. On the harbor fund end, we are balanced with a small accumulation, a small amount to go into the accumulation and capital funding, about $12,000. Thin, but we're balanced. The discretionary goal spending side, we've got $55,000 going towards the Boatyard Financial Feasibility Study. If warranted after the RFQ process, that would be coming out of the accumulation fund. Will be coming back to Council for whatever direction we end up going on Boatyard. We've got 5,000 going to the eelgrass mitigation policy consultancy per Goal One B, built into the operating fund, and 5,000 for small infrastructure beautification, also part of the goal process, Goal Three E. Of note, revenue is primarily based on the 10-year model, and it's about a little over $2 million total. Revenues, if you don't include, $343,000 in grants, which are essentially a pass-through. And expenditures obviously match and not quite exceed revenues. I guess we'll get to the nitty-gritty of it if we have time later next time around.
Okay, questions? Okay. Okay, I'll just cover IT real quickly. So the Information Technology Internal Service Fund is, is our IT fund. So actually, what happens is money is transferred out of the general fund into this internal services fund, and it funds the IT department. No change in personnel or any of the basic things there. And within this fund, there is $7,000 to move the servers from City Hall into the fire station, once the, once the new fiber is into the fire station, and that is, has been a long-term goal in order to, for really survivability, because we don't have backup power in City Hall. There's that $7,000 for IT Support Services. Our City Works contract lies within this IT budget, that's 23K, and then our GIS, the IT part of GIS lies in there also for 20,000. Okay, I'll cover this, this slide here, so I'm going to direct your attention to the slide on the screen, it's also in your packet. So this is a summary of other key funds. It's in the budget letter, as this, this table right here. What this shows is what the current balance is in the fund, what the change is this year, and what the balance is projected to be at the end of this fiscal year. We currently have 4.1 million in the, in the general fund emergency reserve. We're transferring 20,000 into the general fund this year, which is in line with the budget forecast, but we're also planning to make $20,000 on, on interest. And so really, there's a small $585 decrement to the fund over the year. The, in that fund will be at the, the forecast, the Leyland forecast projected level at the end of this year. The Risk Management Fund currently has $280,000 in it. Your minimum balance in there is $100,000. Based on a couple of outstanding potential liabilities, we do not recommend that we take any money out of that fund this year or right now. However, at the end of this coming year, with an additional 92 going into that fund, there may be some opportunity for some one-time spending out of the $372,000 balance, but we should get through a couple of these potential liabilities that are hanging out there that are, that are sort of confidential liability things before we consider doing that. The Capital Replacement Fund, we've discussed that a lot, there's $200,000 in it, there's none going in this year. The Vehicle Replacement Fund, there's 40, 146 in it, there's 25 going in this year, and so it'll have a balance of 171. You'll see 75 in the budget, that's because this budget includes the purchase of one Watch Commander vehicle, which is beyond its useful service life. So there's a 50,000, there's a $75,000 transfer into this fund, but then a $50 expense into the fund, so over the year, it'll be a $25,000 increase. The Capital Projects Accumulation has 250, $260,000 in it and no contribution this year, based on your direction. Facility Maintenance Fund is, has got a couple of bucks in it, and we are funding facility maintenance out of the rents from the Distazio's building. The General Plan Fund has sufficient funds to finish off the general plan this year. There's also some, I think some other, other grant funds in a different fund there for the general, for the general plan. The Government Impact Fees has a healthy amount in it, $735,000. And we are formulating right now what, what we can legally spend that money on and may bring to you some recommendations in the, in the weeks ahead to achieve some of the goals that, that we have. And finally, the Compensable Leave Fund has $360,000 in it now. It will receive another $50,000 from the, from the general fund this year. It'll have a balance, perhaps a balance of $410,000 at the end of the year. That is a GASB required accounting there, and this is something that we are, started to do over the last two years, and is a wise thing to do. When somebody retires or resigns, if they have a compensable leaves balance, that has to be pulled out of somewhere to pay them. And instead of going into the operating budget and saying, oh, no, we have a $20,000 bill that we didn't project, we've started to build this fund so that we can pay those things out of this fund, and we have a regular contribution into it.
If I can make a, a quick note, sorry, just the headers inadvertently didn't get changed, so the current balance is the projected balance at the end of the current fiscal year, and the other two should read FY 1718 on the next two columns, so just a quick note.
Thank you, Craig. There is, this is a list of the other special funds that are, that are in the back page, in the eighties and nineties pages of the budget worksheets. Some of these are significant, and we just talked about them. For example, the General Fund Emergency Reserve or the Risk Management Fund. Others are, are smaller funds, such as the Bike Pass Fund, the, the facility maintenance we talked about. So, and these are all, all funds that we're happy to go into more detail on tonight in two weeks, or perhaps better, in the two weeks intervening, as we have the opportunity to sit down and go through the budget with each of you. This is the Council giving slide. What you'll see here is, is, and these headers didn't get changed either, I'm sorry. So this is what, what the Council committed in last year to these, to these various funds. This is our recommendation this year. The addition, so there was, the addition is, if you would like to consider a, I think it's actually a $450 contribution slash membership in the California Coastal Trails Project, which is a, a project to, to vision and eventually build a network of trails along the entire California coast, of which we're part, obviously, and which the Cayucus Morabey Connector would be part. And finally, you asked, and we don't recommend that we discuss this now, but just want, want you to know it's here, you asked that we also bring during this budget process a sort of menu of potential program cuts that we would have to consider next year and the year after. That list is included in the budget letter, so you have it for, and the community has it for reference in the budget letter. We just had a slide built in case we had, we wanted to start that conversation tonight. But I think what recommend we do now, Mr. Mayor, is turn it back to you for public comment and for Council discussion. Okay, great, thanks. I'm going to open up for public comment.
I'm going to open up for public comment right now. Anybody like to speak for public comment? Come on up. Thanks.
Mayor, councilmen and staff, Carol Truesdale, been here since 1995. I'm kind of scratching my head a little bit. One question I want to throw out there. I noticed that 376,000 is paying for dispatch, which was outsourced. Before outsourcing, Mr. Buckingham, what did it cost us? And you can answer that whenever. And then I noticed that 150,000 for legal services for the general fund portion and only 400, 4.5 thousand for legal fees for HR. I didn't notice in anything else that legal was represented in that. Do you know what the legal fees are going to be totally? My questions, thank you.
Thanks. Next for public comment?
Bart Beckman, Morro Bay. I have one comment on what was discussed. The CALPERS, is that discretionary? Because it's presented as a gap issue, which means we can decide we're not going to fund that. So that's the, that would be my interpretation. So it's discretionary, right? Because that's what you presented. Okay, I'd like to answer that question when you get there, because that, I've got a whole bunch of other ones that I'll cat, that I'll get in the finance committee. For some reason, one of the published agenda items was not discussed here. And that's the WRF. There's some, there's a consultant cost that you're going to issue of a 1.2 million dollars. This ties into the letter that Karen and I sent to you that we believe that you should look at, an independent consultant to look at creative ways to look at the WRF project. We say independent because basically the person who stands to gain by the decision you made to separate water and sewer, stands to make millions of dollars off of your decision because project management keeps going on. So not only, so you're talking about a person who has a very reason financially to love what you did and not to be creative. And also beyond that, I'd like to point out that if, you have got to believe, I think, that we will never need the water. You've got to believe that climate change is a hoax perpetrated by the Chinese and the 97% of climate scientists are not correct. So that we will not need the water issue addressed. Because if you do think we need water, if you escalate the cost of the part you pulled out, could be up to 10 million. The additional project management cost, because it keeps going, could be three to five million. The additional coordination between the two projects, because now you're separating the engineering and the construction effects out, could be another 3 million. Continency on top of that, 4 million. The water savings that we're not going to get until later on could be another 2 million. Because of us not basically keeping up with Cayucus, we're already into some, a number of 1 to 2 million there. You made a decision that could cost us 20 to 30 million dollars more. And that's on top of numbers that were not escalated because they use current day dollars. So it's really almost potentially more than that. So I, I thought one of the best decisions that was made by the last council was when you merged the two projects and pulled it forward. And I was very disheartened to hear that you were pulling it out, which is part of why we wrote the letter. But again, we need to have independence and independence to look at the Cayucus option, unblemished by decisions that were made in the past. So I don't know why you didn't discuss one of the agenda items, but it happened to do with this, one of the posted agenda items. I think it was the only one you didn't cover, but it had to do with this. And I would ask you to rethink and potentially go back to your consultant, because if he's really being a good consultant.
I have to ask you to wind up.
If he's really being a good consultant, he should have pointed out to you that you're adding 20 to 30 million dollars on to the cost of the overall water plant. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. Thanks. As we're, yeah, as we're going, you want to look for some responses to some of the questions?
Sure, I'll just briefly address the three, three key questions that were not WRF-related. So the first one is, is CALPERS contribution discretionary? I think that probably came from this slide where we listed CALPERS increases as part of the budget gap. The, the CALPERS contributions are not discretionary, as I think the council is aware, we are going to have to pay the 1.3 million dollars over eight years of increases. What we are trying to do, capture, capture here is if we do, if revenues stay as they are, then we're going to have to cut 1.1 million dollars worth of programs over the next eight years in order to pay for that non-discretionary required expense. And thus, that would represent a reduction in level of current service. So what we're trying to capture here is, is that our 13.6 million dollars sustains our current level of service, but to improve our level of service, whether in streets or capital or rec or anywhere else, then we would need additional revenues. So most important point is that CALPERS expense is not a discretionary expense. On dispatch, great question on dispatch. I think we analyzed this about six months ago again. I say again, because we looked at it last year as well. The dispatch cost to the cities for the outsourced dispatching is roughly in line with what the city was paying for dispatch internally. I'm confident that both, both Chief Knuckles and, and Chief Cox would communicate that we have an increased level, level of service. We have better service with outsourced dispatch. But on the financial question, the outsourcing of dispatch did not save gobs of money. It's not costing gobs of money more either. It's about in line with what it costs when we ran it in-house, but our level of service has improved. And finally, on legal, great question on legal. So the, the, we, we'll put together a slide for this next time. The total legal cost is not what was presented as the general fund legal cost. And if you look on line 6107, I think it is, under each of the enterprise funds, 6101, thank you. Line 61, yeah, there it is, 61 on 1, 101 on each of the enterprise funds lists the amount of the total legal bill that's apportioned to that fund. So the, whatever we briefed in this previous slide, right about there. That 150,000 is the general fund portion. And then, for example, there's 72,000 that's allocated to the wastewater portion. And there's others allocated to the water revenue fund, other to the harbor fund. And each of the key enterprise funds that accesses legal service, the legal services are charged within that fund. We'll, we'll do a roll-up that shows what the total, total legal costs are for the next presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And with that, we'll bring it back to council. Matt, you want to start us off with any question or some of your comments and direction, what you'd like to see coming back next time?
Sure. John made me think of it when you brought up your question earlier. In terms of Dave, and I guess for staff, looking at this right now, what sort of, are you looking for suggestions? Are you looking for typos? Are you, what would you like to hear or see from council?
So this is the, the staff's consolidated proposed budget. We've spent lots of time together in the conference room and Craig and Sandy lots of time till midnight the last few weeks. So this is the staff's best professional recommendation at a proposed budget. As, as, there's a couple areas, and Rob mentioned one, that we're, would like to do a little bit of tweaking to. For many, many years, we've had water and wastewater capital projects sort of buried in the operating fund. That's not a great place to do it. So we're going to pull those out over the next two weeks and be able to lay those out more clearly for you. We also owe you the, the maintenance project list and perhaps recommendations for capital project spending. You've noticed there was a little bit of money in there in project accumulation and capital replacement. And so we, we owe you that. Otherwise, this is our best recommendation to you for how we would proceed. And we would like the council to comment on that, provide guidance and, and ask us hard questions to make sure it's straight.
Okay, and one question. And how are we going to bring this to public? Are we posting it on our website? Or are we going to have downloadable? Are we going to have a manipulative, either the slideshow and/or the page-by-page budget numbers that people can go through?
So this presentation and this, these worksheets will be posted on the, on the website tomorrow under budget study session number one. And then before the next council, and those were, the presentation wasn't included in the agenda packet, but everything else was included in the agenda packet. And then as we make adjustments through the week before the next council, through the next two weeks before the next council meeting, we'll, we'll, in the, in the agenda packet for the next study session, we will summarize changes made to this, recommended changes to what was presented tonight.
And so speaking to the public in terms of any suggestions that might come in from general public and notify me, are we going to have any sort of quick way that people can get either, I mean, they can email us suggestions, but likewise for staff?
Ideally, they would, they would send an email to, to the staff, probably best placed to whatever department it is, it addresses. For example, community development and ensure that Craig and myself are copied.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Red?
Just a couple of specific questions. On page 14 of the agenda under Public Works, talking about the, the new gas tax revenue, there is a sentence that says that a decent chunk of the $68,000 will go toward the retirement costs of employees working in street maintenance. And I don't, I don't know what that means. Is this something, is this kind of specific thing, something you would rather have us talk to you about on a one-on-one rather than, than doing this?
No, I, I can certainly address that. So, excuse me, with the state passage of Senate Bill 1 recently, which was great from a city financial perspective, because gas tax will be going up beginning November 1st. So in the current year budget, we have 237,000 roughly in gas tax revenue coming in. And what that does is it predominantly pays for actual staff time. So it pays for the staff to physically go out there and do work in the streets or fill potholes. And it also pays for some material costs as well to fill some potholes and do some minor maintenance on the roadways. What the, the increase that we're projecting for next year, based on the California Department of Finance figures, is about 68,000, I think? Yeah, 68,000 up to 305,000. And that note was simply included because as CALPERS costs increase, that'll eat into a chunk of that increase as well. So that wouldn't be all new patchwork in the streets or new potholes filled. Certainly it'll help with some of that, but that unit as a whole still has general fund support outside and, and beyond the gas tax revenue. So previously, when we got 237,000 in gas tax revenue for the current year, that didn't pay for all those labor costs and patching work and all that fun stuff. So this incremental increase will pay for a little more of that, but some of that will go towards retirement costs as well.
Okay. But then my other question, these little particular questions that I have, would they be better done in one-on-one in between meetings?
That'd be great. And what we are hoping to do, and we're starting to work on that today, is to arrange three meetings with council in the week, in the next seven to eight days. Some 2-2-1 meetings where two council members and the whole staff are available so you can go through all of those, all those great questions. And we can do that three times. And that'll give the council the ability to really dig down and to ask all of those, all those tough questions and, and sort of maximize staff time as well so that we're doing it as efficiently as we can. And so what we'd like to do is, is tomorrow identify times in the next, what we said is before next, next Wednesday, to, to sit down with each of you, focus budget study session either with, with one of you or with two of you together.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I say something just to clarify the record? Those meetings that are going to occur are not going to be for you to be telling the city manager, making decisions. It's just you to have questions answered. That's the whole purpose of those meetings.
Thanks for that clarification for our public. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll defer to that.
Thanks. Good job.
So I'll leave my comments as global comments then. So I just want to say thank you, staff and departments, your staff too, I guess departments, for a great process. You know, the goals were established and this year, like last year, the operating budget is being produced based upon the goals that have been established and the cuts that had to be made, given the significant changes in some of our expenses. And so I just wanted to say thanks for all the work and time that you put into it in meeting the needs of both the community, I think, and us as well. Two, the tenure planning process is, I think, a gold standard for many cities that haven't done it yet. And we're one of the few. And so I just want to applaud our administration for doing that. I think that gives us a significant advantage in looking long-term into the future. If you're shortsighted, you're only seeing what's right in front of you and you may not see that oncoming bus. And so I think the tenure plan was absolutely money well-spent and should continue in the future. But all of that said, thank you for the time and the effort. And Finance Department, thank you, because I know you had to crunch all this stuff up and, and they just kind of fed you these nasty sheets that you made them fill out, but you had to put in all the numbers. And so thanks for all the work that you guys did. With that, I just had some high-level comments and then I'll ask my specific comments and have that dialogue at those meetings. We'll have one-on-one. For me, the issue that's similar to the comment that somebody had asked Rob regarding the water fund, and, and the answer was that, you know, we really robbed our long-term maintenance to pay for short-term operations way back when. We didn't steal from the general fund or take money, I should never use steal, but take money out of the general fund for that. But we, we used accumulated reserves to fund short-term operations. And I still disagree with the majority of council that did vote to what I consider do the same thing. And that is to take money out of two long-term funds, the project accumulation and the capital replacement fund, to partially fund the CALPERS issue. And so I will stick with my point that I think that's not prudent, not good planning, and it's no different than what happened with the water fund. I do have questions about the SRO officer that I can do one-on-one with you guys when we get into meetings. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. I wonder if our revenue assumptions included any thoughts about Highway 1 closure and what the impact may well be? We didn't talk much about the revenue side. It's, it's great in the write-up. I understand the write-up. But I wonder if there's an impact and if, if we're able to discern that and if that might affect TOT, sales tax, et cetera, because of that closure moving into the next fiscal year for a number of months. Third or fourth comment would be, I wonder if we looked at any other outsourcing activities or opportunities, just as a cultural type of thing? No, I didn't say police or fire, so don't misconstrue that community. But I think it's always good to look at outsourcing opportunities. I don't necessarily always think that they're, they're good opportunities, but are there any out there that might save money? And then I also wonder if somewhere down the line, we might get a, a report on what the impact on the write-up with regard to staffing and what the impact might be on getting further behind. I realize now we're in, we're in crunch mode with regard to a general fund that can't support maintaining what some might call parity in salaries across the board. But I wonder five years from now, what that's going to look like. And so I'm really interested in, in hopefully collecting and having that data with regard to turnover and exit interview stuff. So that's just a reminder I'll throw out that I think will help drive budgeting next year, maybe not this year. And, and I just, just want to say from a cultural standpoint, I'm hoping And I just want to say, from a cultural standpoint, I'm hoping that, and I think, I see it, that each manager is really looking very closely at what they might do to really significantly cut. When I first got elected, it appeared to me that you were cut to the bone, and now we're chipping away at that. But you always have to ask the question, and I see no reductions in any staff levels whatsoever. And it may be because we've chipped the bone. I don't know. But I think it's always good to ask that and have that as an open conversation upfront. So, those are just general comments. Thanks for your work and all the work that you guys have done in your time. We'll look forward to those one-on-ones.
Thanks, Marla.
Or two-on-ones.
Yeah. Yes, I also want to say thank you to the staff for doing this. Unfortunately, we got it kind of late, so I have not had the opportunity to really go through this in any great detail, but I'm looking forward to doing that. So, in many respects, the slide presentation is my first exposure to it. I did look very carefully at the budget letter that you prepared, and have a number of comments about that. And I am curious how, in these one-on-ones, if we want to actually express an opinion, are we not allowed to do that? Are we just going to be asking questions, or can we make suggestions about where we would like to see reductions? That's, I guess, a question for Joe.
We need to be careful. You don't want to, you certainly can give your thoughts to the city manager. The city manager then can't share those thoughts with any of the council people. And the city manager can come forward, based on those thoughts, to the entire council at a future meeting, saying, here's some ideas. So, if that's sort of the process you were thinking of, that would work. I can, can do that.
All right, okay.
Exactly what he said. And so, we do that every council meeting. We just heard one council member make a comment about SRO and interested in more information on that, or on other items. Every council meeting, we go through this process of listening, and that can happen in the 2-2-1s also. But we will not make any decisions or changes without hearing a 3-2 majority of the council say, implement this.
Right.
A 3-2 majority at a council.
At a council meeting in this setting.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that. Because, you know, my initial reaction to this was, we are in serious financial conditions long-term, and we know that, and we've got the tenure forecast, and we know that we're in a budget-reduction, cost-cutting mode, which we've already talked about we have to do. So, it was somewhat disappointing to see personnel costs actually get to be a larger proportion of the budget, because that's going to drive future increases. So, I have to say, as a general comment, I was disappointed that we weren't somehow looking for some cost reductions in personnel as opposed to increases. And I spent the morning just looking at a few other cities at their personnel costs, and we seem to be really on the high end. And I know that John has, John Heding, as a proportion of the overall general fund I'm talking about. And I know that John Heding has, in the past, recommended benchmarking, and this is something that I think would be very interesting to benchmark as an issue, because as we add more staff, and we're just increasing our costs long-term, and yet, we know in two to three years, we have to start cutting. And if personnel costs are 75% of the budget, I don't know where we're going to start cutting. So, that was my initial reaction to the budget. And any specific comments and questions, I'll wait until we have our two-on-ones, or one-on-twos, or whatever. Thank you.
Could I just address, this is great, and just sort of globally address that one observation, and then we can get in great detail on this as we go forward.
And I'm looking at time, so we can get everybody's remarks.
There's a one-minute comment. The, we tried to get this in the budget letter a little bit, but we should ask ourselves, what sort of a budget situation are we in? And is it a short-term one or a long-term structural issue? My assessment, it's a long-term structural issue, not a short-term cash flow. If it were a short-term cash flow picture, issue, then we would say, let's not do any staff training this year. Let's defer maintenance in this area. Let's defer coal increases, or whatever. We can't sustain ourselves as an organization for the next 20 years by doing those sort of things. It sort of goes to Councilmember Heding's observation of not having maintenance funds and those sort of things. So, my sense, what we recommended were the normal staff changes that we would recommend in any situation. And what we believe is that we're going to have to take a hard look at some program elements, and those program elements may well be staff elements going forward, labor elements going forward. But, for example, in those program cuts, a program element is level of fire service, level of police service, not saying cutting, or not saying eliminating, but or maintenance, a reduction in the level of cleaning and maintenance. Most of those will result in staffing reductions also. But my sense is we need to look hard at program elements going forward.
Any further questions or comments, Marla? Okay. I just want to, I have a couple of comments. So, first, thanks again for the work. I know we'll have more comments to make, and we'll have an opportunity to do that. And I was trying to be mindful of time, and so, we'll set that up next time, because it'll take more discussion than what we have now. What I'd like to see when we come back, I'd like to see the budget binder that we usually work, and I know I had a conversation with Dave and Craig on that. This is more of the financial, the details. I'd like to see the budget binder when we come back, and we can use both of those documents to work with. The budget letter, though thorough, I think it reads more like a staff report, and I'd like to see that trimmed down to about half and be summarized. The list of capital expenditures, I understand that that's going to be coming back. I know we've had, those are some of the details that we often get into, because we do have limited funds, and we do have somewhat special requests and special attention to details on which one of those projects that we move forward with. And I'm hoping that we have some input from our advisory boards, Public Works, et cetera, on some of those capital projects. I would like to have council consider purchasing public finance books for our Citizens Finance Advisory Committee and council, and to have one for public checkout or at the library. I have a copy of one myself, and I think it's one that the city manager has, I have. I think it'd be, I brought it with me, it could be this one or an equivalent, but I think it would be beneficial for our Citizens Finance Committee and council, and I'd like to see that included. I don't think it's necessarily a big expenditure, but it can be carried over and beneficial for us. I had a question on the paid intern. That was being reduced or eliminated. I just, I'm going to have more conversations about that. The value that we've got out of having the paid intern, I think, is, one, I think we get a lot more work for the amount that we pay for that. So, when I look at that, I'm trying to think of balancing the workload with how much we're, and I know we're talking about cutting, but I'm looking at maybe balancing that, and I don't know what those numbers are, but balancing that number out of the Opportunity Fund, and looking at what the value is of having a paid intern. The vehicle replacement program, would like to understand if we have a, if we've looked at that vehicle replacement program where we cost-analyze, cost-benefit, do we extend the length of the vehicle's life versus to, in the adjustment? So, we're looking at cuts, so are we trying to balance that out and saying, we're going to extend this out a couple of years, or another year? As I look at other municipalities, I see, you know, everybody's kind of stretching their dollar on some of their vehicles. I'm very mindful of the safety of our employees, but I just want to look at that. Those are probably my, and I just, I'm getting right underneath the clock, those are the key ones that I wanted to start out with. I know that we have an opportunity, and I would expect that when we do our 2-2-1s, that we would be able to summarize in public everybody's comments in those. And I was glad, you know, Dave and Joe presented that analysis and communication on what a 2-2 looks like, 2-2-1 would look like, you know, Brown Act requirements. And I would expect that we'd be able to summarize all that information during those meetings publicly when we come back to council at our next budget session. And those are my requests for our next session. And I guess the next question, the question is, the budget binder, how soon would we be able to get that out? And I say budget binder, for some, they don't know what that means, but it's the overall budget. It has, it's our budget document, not necessarily the description of the finances.
Probably middle of next week.
Okay.
At the soonest. It's just the workload to go in and then update all the actual numbers and amended and everything.
That'd be great.
So, somewhere between mid and late next week.
Yep, that'd be great. Thanks.
Just for those of, so, those budget binder sheets are less descriptive than what we gave you tonight. So, there's just one line for services, and what you saw tonight was a service section with 10 lines underneath it and the notes. So, we wanted to start with that additional level of detail. So, we weren't asking, what's $26,000 in services, but it was laid out there for you. We, this time around, intentionally did that to start with a level of detail, to provide that level of detail, and then we'll go to that sort of more global look that is what's actually the published budget.
Okay. And that, we're right on the end here, so any final comments?
Just if you could summarize for the public, so that, and our community, that they know this is a very short first blush for us and what the next steps are. We're just seeing this for, in the last couple of days.
Yeah, thanks, John.
I just want to make sure everybody knows that this isn't our only look. We've got lots of questions, and so, Dave, maybe you could summarize that.
Yes, thank you. And I'm moving back to this slide here. So, first, just to reiterate, and this was a little different than last year, and the year before, because the budget study sessions we had those two years were on nights where there weren't a council meeting. It started at 6:00, and we could go till 10:30 or 11:00, and we did once. This, the mayor's keeping us on time here, and so, this was intended as a two-hour session to introduce the staff's proposed budget, not to have the council be able to ask all those great questions you need to, but this is a fairly normal process. A staff introduces a budget, and then the board has an opportunity to dig into that budget, to ask those hard questions, and then to give their guidance on how they want to change that proposed budget. So, this was our introduction of the budget to you. Now, we all have two weeks to do these 2-2-1s, to ask hard questions, to make good observations and ask hard questions, and then to come back in two weeks from tonight, right here on May the 23rd, for Budget Study Session Number Two, which will be, which will be much more discussion and direction, and what happens if we do, if we move money from this to this, what's the effect of it? And then, we have May 30th for additional study session, if it's needed. And then, hopefully, at that point, we'll be able to adopt a budget in the regular council meeting on June 13th.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. And with that, we'll conclude this special meeting, and we'll move on to our council meeting in 30 minutes at 6 o'clock. Thank you.